Five, third. Three, hold the glass. Read aloud for reconsidering. Two by nine to the county's reading. And clerk, if you would, about seven A of final reading.
An ordinance closing and abandoning an unopened right-of-way in the eighteen-hundred block of Allen Street and an unopened right-of-way in thirty-three hundred block of North Park Zone as detailed on the attached map, so certain conditions.
Five, please.
It's two.
That's the one we thought.
That's one we wanted.
I know. No? That's next. I mean, that's next. Oh.
We had eight this morning and we changed to two. We apparently changed the wrong.
I think you had changed the wrong.
Is this me?
Yes, ma'am.
It probably works. Oh, okay.
This is on the final reading. This is final reading, it's past the last.
Okay, well, I'm just saying y'all got, y'all got two on here, so it's an eight.
Yeah, exactly.
So then I move to approve for law. Ten thirty from two to eight.
We have a motion on the floor to approve with proper second question, comments, or votes. All in favor of either, aye. Any opposed, no. So, all right. Now moving to mortgages on first reading. I'm clerk, eight, please.
An ordinance closing and abandoning an unopened right-of-way in the unop- an unopened three-hundred block of East Madison Street as detailed on the attached map, so certain conditions.
I think, Mr. Attorney, this is the one that should have.
Yes, sir.
Rejected District Two.
Awesome.
Yeah, so we apparently made the error ourselves this morning and kind of need to correct this. All right, Councilwoman, here.
Thank you. This item is a mandatory referral to abandon an unopened right-of-way. I have requested that the developer or the applicant reach out to me and that has not happened yet. This has been a common parcel and so I'm going to defer this until seven twenty-three if I have satisfaction in conversation with the applicant.
All right.
So I move to defer until seven twenty-four.
For the record, can we have at this one time amended also to be District Two, is that correct?
Certainly, if you'd like to amend that.
We'll do that just for next week, for two weeks. All right. I'm hearing a motion to defer until seven twenty-three with a proper second. Questions, comments before we vote? All in favor of either, aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries. With no objections, I'm clerk, can we read items A, B, and C together?
Item B, an ordinance closing and abandoning the unopened right-of-way in the one-thousand block of Mackey Avenue as detailed on the attached map, so certain conditions. Item C, an ordinance closing and abandoning the unopened right-of-way in the thirty-two, thirty-six hundred blocks of Tower Street as detailed on the attached map, so certain conditions.
Move so further.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Questions, comments before we vote on items A, B, and C. All in favor of either, aye. Any opposed, no. Motion does carry. Now moving into our planning items for this afternoon. Madam clerk, eight, please.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga Part Two Chapter Thirty-Eight, so as to reason on parts of properties located at fifty-eight, forty-eight Highway, one fifty-three, and six, sixty-one-on-nine, wide road from R two residential zone to R three residential zone, so to certain conditions.
Item number twenty, twenty-four dash zero, one, zero, two. Is applicant present? Is there any opposition present? Councilman Lethard, I'm seeing an applicant or any opposition.
Me, I'm on my survey and your district has no questions. Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Any questions or comments? All in favor of either, aye. Any opposed, no. So I move. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Moving now to eight, E, District Three.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga Part Two Chapter Thirty-Eight, so as to condition numbers two through four, and to make condition number one, importance number nine, one thirty-five, previous case number nineteen eighty-nine, zero three four six, for property located at fifty-four thirty-one, eastern five, so certain conditions.
Case number twenty, twenty-four dash zero, zero, nine, four. Is applicant present? All right, thank you. Is there any opposition present? Councilman Lethard, I'm seeing an applicant with no opposition present.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know this is the District Three. Councilman Smith has been following very closely, seeing no opposition, will move to approve.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Any more questions or comments before we vote? All in favor of either, aye. Any opposed, no. Eyes, head. Eight, K, please.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga Part Two Chapter Thirty-Eight, so as to reason on properties located at fifty-one twenty-six, fifty-one thirty-two, fifty-one thirty-eight, fifty-one forty-four, fifty-one fifty, and fifty-one fifty-seven, strip line circle, from R two residential zone to R three residential zone.
Case number twenty, twenty-four dash zero, zero, nine, five. Is the applicant present? Okay, is there any opposition present? Councilman Lethard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. See no opposition, knowing that Councilman Smith has been following this closely, I do move to approve.
Second.
All right, we do have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Questions or comments before we vote? All in favor of either, aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries. Moving now to eight, G, please.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga Part Two Chapter Thirty-Eight, so as to amend condition number four, adding a new condition in place of original condition number one, or importance number one, thirty-one, thirty-two, a previous case note, two thousand sixteen, zero one six five, for property located at six to six eighty-four, east right of all, so certain conditions.
Case twenty, twenty-four dash zero, zero, nine, one. Is applicant present? Okay, thank you. Is there any opposition present? Okay, I see some opposition present. Councilwoman Burge, I said applicant with opposition.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. As we discussed earlier in open meeting, it wasn't so much opposition, it was a pretty forward challenge that might happen and they did like it on a relative to transportation.
Okay, I'll tell you what, let's, let's do this then, let's give the applicant seven minutes to give their presentation and then we'll allow nine minutes for the presentation. Just to keep it balanced. Just, I'll tell you, if you will give us seven minutes, we'll call, please.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman, this is Farley. The late fifty, five thirty-seven Market Street. We have been working on the project for a while. We have talked to Ms. Burge, we've also talked to the gentleman that appeared from the Brainerd Hills Community Association. They voiced traffic concerns probably about a month ago. I contacted T I, I contacted C I, and also talked to a traffic engineer about the situation. We had explained to them that as part of the land service process, our intent is fully to hire the traffic consultant to determine exactly where our entrance needs to be. We've only ever wanted one of them, so the condition of having one curb cut is totally fine. We understand that there's a traffic issue on that portion of East Springer Road. We also understand that it's a T I road. T I will have to make the decision to do those improvements. If you look at that particular area, from the interstate to Vance Road, in the interstate there are multiple lanes, in the Vance Road there are multiple lanes, that section that comes along our frontage would need to be at least three lanes to do a turn lane in either direction. If we were to attempt to do a turn lane, our takers and our full would be beyond our property means. That would provide conflicts for other driveways and other streets along that section of East Springer Road. That's why a full three-lane would be what was needed for that area. I also know that in talking to our traffic engineer, he is one of the gentlemen that's working on the study with the city for the signal optimization program. I found out that East Springer is one of the first areas to be looked at. I also determined that once they start the study, they have to do, they have to connect, collect data and do analysis on the intersections and one of the things they're looking at is, does the hardware work? There's a lot of signals in our city where the hardware's not working properly, replacing loops and that kind of stuff. Once they collected that and did the analysis, they'll start the repairs fairly close to when they end. Well, I don't know, we have to wait two years for the study to be done in order for repairs to certain areas to start immediately. I think that will help. I think the, nothing's gonna be a sure cure for everything. I think once the interstate improvements get complete, that will also help. I think it's an equal amount thing. I don't think there's gonna be one solution that fixes everything, but we will do what we can do to help.
All right. Any questions for that? All right, the opposition, you will have nine minutes as well.
My name is Brandon Brunner. I'm the interim president of the Brainerd Hills Neighborhood Association. I would just like to vent a little bit where you can understand the frustration of other neighborhoods, seeing things happen and not having really a resource to give answers or action taken. The interstate is, the bridges were taken out in our area, everybody's coming down East Springer Road. If there's a traffic accident on the interstate, everybody comes to East Springer Road. If, well, I could go on and on. It's just, who do we deal with? You know, I go to C I, they give me a T I. I ask how to get ahold of T I, nobody knows. Don't tell them that I gave you the number, was what I was told. You know, you go to your council person who's been very helpful to us. We hear about a traffic study, you know, I, I don't, I understand what a traffic study is. You know, I'm sure Carol can explain to me, but you know, it's just the frustration of the people that live on the road that are affected by this traffic. It's very difficult to get answers and see solutions coming our way. You know, we've got, well, I can stop there, but it, it is frustrating to hear that there are so many state roads in Chattanooga and so Chattanooga can't give you the answer to a state road project. Are you road to state road, East Road to the state road, Ringo Road is the state road, you know, they've even in our area, our state roads. So, we're frustrated.
All right, so. Let me, Pat, did you just have a two-minute proposal?
Can I?
Oh, yeah, yes.
Right.
You wanna ask?
Yeah. So I feel like a frustration, you know, we've done all kinds of things, not always getting the answers. I do know that Dan Lloyd, our planner, regularly offered to sit and talk, number one, explain things, and number two, put our heads together about what can work.
Right, he, he offered immediately. Yeah, we're ready for that.
So, what I, what I also told Tiffany as well is that I want to defer for a week and so you can have those conversations.
Okay.
The, the challenge that's happening here is, this is just, this is, the request is just about lifting a condition, the, the property's already wrong.
Right.
But I think it's a great time to have the discussion that needs to be had so that everybody can be playing with full information and Tiffany's set, it's agreeable, too. Will that, the frustrate, I, I share the frustration.
We love the frustration.
Is there anything else that you guys need, because I know you don't, you, you're not offended by the, the product, it's the road, is that correct?
Right, right, yeah. And, and the same thing with our entrance, it's our neighborhood, you know, the best part of it, so it can be impossible to get out of our neighborhood.
Right, right. In fact, all of those neighborhoods, but that's the traffic background.
All right.
All right. May I ask the developer something?
Sure.
All right, Councilwoman Lethard. Once you get approval, then when does the project really start?
We still have to do, this is, this is the developer who is purchasing the property. We still have to do land service documents. That'll take a few months. We have a month of the architect to finalize the product. That'll take a little bit of time.
After Tiffany's rep finishes out the engineering, from that point then, we're in lending. I know that we have some building to bring into the site to improve, we've got to move.
Are you looking at about six months or more?
Probably north of that, even. Probably nine months, it's kind of our timeline right now.
So, is it, is it, is it possible that some of these things that are bothering people, you'll, they'll have answers before you even put a shovel in the ground?
I think it's possible. I think part of the problem is that we don't control that information.
I, I know. Dan has been talking about, let's get to the people who do control it and get the neighborhood answers, but it's not something that's happening tomorrow, in other words.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So, that was a question and an answer, Tom. I guess applicant still does have two minutes of vote, if you would like to think.
I, I, I mean, I think we're good. I've told both gentlemen that are here.
Give us two minutes, just so we're not in line.
I've told the two gentlemen here that as we go along the process, the design process, that I'll keep them up to date with kind of where we are and what we're doing, what changes are, have been made versus the plan that they've seen, just so that they have a comfort level with where we are and how we got there. I think a lot of it concerned, a lot of times is, well, here's the product, but how did you get here? If they don't understand the process, then they don't understand why we did certain things the way we did them. I want to make sure that they fully understand why we're doing what we're doing, the way we're doing it. I think that'll help alleviate a lot of the concern.
One more comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Your entrance right now is right across from Mary John, which is a little bit challenging, that's what'd be my one concern.
And, and that's, yes, ma'am, and that's why during the land service, we will employ the traffic consultant to determine exactly where that entrance needs to be. We have the latitude with our design to shift that driveway anywhere we need it, so that'll be us the latitude to do that. It's just that that's one of those things that we do during the land service process because then we'll work on the city, I can do everything else, all the other departments to make sure that we're getting everything.
I appreciate your working with the neighborhood, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Councilwoman.
I move to approve.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper.
Well, we can do it one, wait, take that a second. We could either approve and hold the second reading, or let's defer, let's defer, you'll have the same result, but let's defer for a week. I would defer.
Is the second term good with that?
That's fine, yeah. Let's defer.
All right, so we're going to defer, the motion is to defer until July the sixth.
That, yeah, and it will necessitate two readings, so we'll, either one would work, so let's go with the defer.
All right, we have a second for this. All right, we have a motion on the floor to defer until July the sixth, a proper second. Any questions or comments before, all in favor of either, aye. Any opposed, no. So.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, City Council.
Eight, H.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga Part Two Chapter Thirty-Eight, so as to reason on unaddressed property in four thousand one hundred block of Twelfth Avenue, from R one residential zone to C two convenience commercial zone, so to certain conditions.
Case number twenty, twenty-four dash zero, zero, eight, eight. Is applicant present? Thank you. Is there any opposition present? All right, Councilwoman Dobbie, I'm seeing an applicant, but no opposition present.
Yeah, we have a great neighborhood community discussion on this, so I move to approve.
Second. All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Questions or comments before we vote? All in favor of either, aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries. Moving now to eight, A.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga Part Two Chapter Thirty-Eight, so as to reason on properties located at four twenty and four twenty-two, East Sixteenth Street, from U R M three urban multi-unit residential zone to U C X four urban commercial mixed-use zone, so certain conditions.
Case number twenty, twenty-four dash zero, zero, nine, eight. Is applicant present? Thank you. Is there any opposition present? Councilwoman Dobbie.
Another great project, but trying to do pretty just slow, so I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Any questions or comments before we vote? All in favor of either, aye. Any opposed, no. Eyes, head. Eight, J, please.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga Part Two Chapter Thirty-Eight, so as to reason on properties located at twenty-seven hundred, twenty-seven mile four, twenty-seven O Street, along the street from R three residential zone to U C C Urban General Commercial, so to certain conditions.
Case twenty, twenty-four dash zero, one, zero, zero. Is applicant present? Thank you. Is there any opposition present? Councilwoman Dobbie, looks like you're up here.
Yeah, I would like to, this is why I would like to amend, so move to approve.
Second.
And I would like to amend to add additional condition earlier, the additional conditions which are no short-term vacation laws, and they put privacy against us all along fifty-two, fifty-eight, sixty-four, and West Twenty-Seventh Street, and that's in the form of motions.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to amend with a proper second. Advocate, are you aware and do the motions, thank you. All right, any questions or comments before we vote on them, and all in favor of either, aye. Any opposed, no. So move.
And I would like to move with an easy.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve as amended with a proper second. Questions or comments? All in favor of either, aye. Any opposed, no. So move. Councilwoman. Eight, K, please.
An ordinance, an ordinance to amend Chattanooga Part Two Chapter Thirty, so as to reason on properties located at six oh eight, six fourteen, and four unaddressed properties in six hundred block of Central Avenue, from R three residential zone to U C C Urban General Commercial, so to certain conditions.
Case twenty, twenty-three dash zero, one, seven, nine. Is applicant present? Okay, thank you. Is there any opposition present? Okay, Councilwoman, no. This is interim district.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to have a, have a hand.
Okay. Dan is, oh, I guess Rick, yes.
Just, just a shot.
Great, you thought you were gonna use that.
Well, and I can't. Let's begin the case. This has been heard several months, are remember?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Do, do I need to, can I form up a presentation?
Then, I, I think it's my understanding is applicant wanting to withdraw this case.
Yes, may I?
In that case, let's just ask applicant to come and, and express his wishes.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, we'd like to move through the case, please.
Okay, all right.
Okay. So, yes, I move to withdraw.
Second. Okay, all right, we have a motion on the floor to withdraw this case with a proper second. Any questions or comments before, all in favor of either, aye. Any opposed, no. So move. The case is withdrawn.
Okay, thank you.
We are now ready for eight, L, for that question.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga Part Two Chapter Thirty-Eight, so as to reason on properties located at twenty-six oh two, twenty-six oh four, twenty-six sixty-eight, twenty-six eighty-two, Dice Avenue, from R one residential zone to R T Z residential, so to have some block lines on.
Case twenty, twenty-four dash zero, zero, nine, seven. Is applicant present? Thank you. Is there any opposition to this? Present. Councilwoman, Councilwoman, no?
Yeah, but Councilwoman Coolback believed on the merits of she asked me to approve.
Okay, so you'd like to make a motion?
I like a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you. And we'll do that.
On behalf.
We have a proper second. Any questions or comments before we vote? All in favor of either, aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries. Eight, E, all right, clerk.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga Part Two Chapter Thirty, so as to reason on property located at nine oh five Greenwood Drive and unaddressed property in nine hundred block of Greenwood Drive from R one residential zone to U C C Urban General Commercial, so to certain conditions.
Case twenty, twenty-four dash zero, one, zero, three. Is applicant present? Thank you. Is there any opposition present? Councilwoman, no. I'm seeing applicant, no opposition present.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Once again, I have been asked to move to approve on behalf of Councilwoman Coolback.
All right, this is in form of a motion.
Yes.
All right, we have a motion to approve with a proper second. Questions or comments before we vote? All in favor of either, aye. Any opposed, no. So move. That takes us to Arizona. Moving now to Office of City Attorney. Madam clerk, eight, E, please.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga Part Two Chapter Ten, Section Ten, for the after related to amendments to the two thousand eighteen international residential code regarding mandatory requirements.
Madam, Madam Chair.
Mr. Jeffrey.
I would have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Any questions or comments before we vote? All in favor of either, aye. Any opposed, no. Motion does carry. Now moving into resolutions. Madam clerk, under economic development, nine, please.
A resolution authorizing acceptance of one hundred fifty thousand twenty-seven dollars and twenty-two cents for Hamilton County as the city's portion from the June twenty twenty-four, Hamilton County Circus Park, this sale with one hundred forty-seven thousand nine hundred ninety-six thousand eighty-three cents as the city's portion, four hundred thirteen dollars fifty-nine cents applied to the city terms fee, one thousand six hundred sixteen dollars and eighty cents applied to the city trailer cost, and it can authorize on the transfer of all the proceeds to the Chattanooga Land Bank Building.
All right, what's the pleasure, Council?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Questions or comments before we vote? All in favor of either, aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries. Now moving to Office of the Mayor, is there are no objections on State Items nine, B, C, and D together first? Well, I'll tell you what, let me, let me back this truck. Let's, let's do nine.
A resolution confirming Metro's appointment of Gerald Nell as the chief information officer.
Please, Council?
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Any questions or comments before we vote? All in favor of either, aye. Any opposed, no. All right, welcome. All right, thank you. Now, Madam clerk, nine, C, please.
A resolution confirming Metro's appointment of Harry Summers as interim police chief of the city of Chattanooga.
All right, Councilwoman Dobbie.
Move to approve.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Any questions or comments before we vote? All in favor of either, aye. Any opposed, no. Chief, I have it. Congratulations. Moving now to the Office of the City Attorney. Clerk, nine, D, please.
A resolution authorizing Office of City Attorney to engage the following firms to weaken the lock-in services. Long B, McDonald's, and two, Bass Bears, Jones, P L C. Three, Butler Schmoe, L M P. Four, John's, Bonner, Showful, P C. Five, Gerhassa Peters, L Y N, and Cannon, P C. Six, Adams, Sawasdee, with McGuire Woods. Seven, Miller and Martin, P L C. Eight, Tigwell and Associates, P C. Nine, Jan, Jamie, Jamie Varnell, with Davidson, Ossie, C. Ten, Evans, Harrison, and Hackett, P L C. Eleven, Brian Corbett, of Time and Charity Insurance Company, Chattanooga. Twelve, Rufus Holmes, and Peters, F L C. Thirteen, Lou, Burris, F L C. Thirteen, two, eight, ten, N Y P C. Fourteen, Jones, Tiger, Insurance Agency. Eight, fifteen, Robinson, Smith, and Wells. Sixteen, Will U C, Julian. And seventeen, Breach Public Affairs for a period of July one, twenty-twenty-four through June thirty, twenty-twenty-five.
Clerk, Councilwoman Doppie.
She could just read off one more.
Yeah. You better get a breath out of that nation.
Yeah, that is quite a test.
Yeah, the Thursday.
Second. All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Any questions or comments before we vote? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Motion, Mr. Chair. Clerk, if there are no objections to the Council's saying parts and afterwards of public works together, that will be items nine, E, through J, please.
Item E, a resolution authorizing American students to enter into a conservation services agreement for twenty-twenty-four through twenty-twenty-five with trust for public land as essentially the former tax for a term of one year from July one, twenty-twenty-four through June thirty, twenty-twenty-five, or not not to exceed one hundred fifty thousand dollars to be paid in four quarters in installments of thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Item F, a resolution authorizing administrative for the Department of Public Works for a contract number R two-two-zero-six-two-zero-one, Heritage Park Improvements to Global Infrastructure Inc., a piece in Tennessee in the amount of one million five hundred four thousand, six hundred dollars and fifty-five cents with contingency in the amount of one hundred twenty thousand, two hundred seventy-eight dollars and eighty-five cents for a total amount of one million six hundred sixty-nine dollars. One million six hundred sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred seventy-nine dollars and forty cents. Item G, a resolution authorizing administrative for the Department of Public Works for a contract number Y two-four-zero-two-two-zero-one, Washington Hills Roof Replacement to Home Creek in Kentucky, Tennessee in the amount of fifty-five thousand, nine hundred twenty-three dollars with a contingency in the amount of five thousand, five hundred ninety-two dollars for a total amount of sixty-one thousand, five hundred fifteen dollars. Item A, the resolution authorizing administrative for the Department of Public Works to renew the on-call blanket contract number. E one-nine-zero-one-one-two-zero-two for year four of fourth for roof inspections, repairs, and maintenance with the following two vendors, one quarter roofing contractors in Charleston, Tennessee, and two Tri-State Roofing Contractors, L L C, at Chattanooga, Tennessee, for an annual amount of five hundred thousand dollars, used by all departments. Item I, a resolution authorizing the appointment Nicholas Parks and a special commission police officer on armed for the city of Chattanooga Department of Public Works Land Development Office, Coast Division, to perform duties expressly limited to the performance of the duties in the position of co-enforcement inspector one. Item J, a resolution authorizing partner Allison Tater, a special commission police officer on armed for the city of Chattanooga Department of Public Works Land Development Office, Coast Division, to perform duties expressly limited to the performance of the duties in the position of demolition abating specialist.
Councilwoman Hester, follow by Clerk on the left. Move to approve.
Chairman, I'd like to second that noting item F, Heritage Park approvals.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve items nine, E, through J with a proper second. Any other comments or questions before we vote? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Motion, Mr. Chair. Moving now into a planning item, nine, K.
A resolution approving special sections permitting for residential tank unit development for properties located at twelve-seventy-seven, twelve-eighty-three, and twelve-nine-one North, Marrow Road, subject to certain conditions.
Case number twenty-two-four dash zero-one-zero-four is the applicant present. Okay, thank you. Is there any opposition to this case present? Councilwoman Hester.
Hey, earlier I messaged we're going to defer this for two weeks, but applicant careful consideration. We're going to move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Are there any questions or comments before we vote? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? I have it. Moving now to nine, L.
A resolution to amend Resolution Number Three-on-nine-eight-one to apply for an if awarded accept an energy efficiency and conservation lock grant, E E C B G, program funding from the Department of Magic for a direct reimbursement on one or four electric vehicles and charging quid for a total amount not to exceed two hundred thirty-four thousand, two hundred dollars.
Let's move to Clerk. All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Questions or comments before we vote? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? So move. Nine, L, please.
A resolution authorizing appointment of Caleb Brooks of the McCann Animal Services as a special commission police officer on armed for the McCann Animal Center to perform duties expressly limited to the performance of the duties in the position of animal protection officer.
Uh, Clerkwoman Doppie.
As mentioned earlier, Caleb worked in the McCann, so I would move to withdraw. Second.
All right, we have a motion to withdraw with a proper second. Any questions or comments before we vote? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Motion, Mr. Chair. Moving now into purchases for the second.
Good evening, Council. We have two purchases this evening. The first is from the Parks Maintenance Division, Parks Maintenance Division of Parks and Parks. This is the third of a four-year contract with S P I E for security access for multiple city properties. The vendor's required to increase to three percent. The increase has been approved by all departments using the contract. They annual spend of one million one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars will not change. The tenant is from Wake Forest. This is a one-day contract. Annual spending three percent for electric meter and pump services from Chattanooga Armstrong Works. The increase amount of one hundred fifty thousand dollars per year. They annual spend five hundred three thousand dollars.
Move. All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Are there any questions or comments before we vote? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? I have it.
We have one emergency register report from the Wake Forest Department. The department's primary oxygen supplier, Matt Wilson, has had to bring oxygen in from out of state in order to meet the department's oxygen needs. This has resulted in an increased cost per truckload beyond what was anticipated in the linked agreement. The emergency purchase requests for an absentee amount of eighty thousand dollars to cover all anticipated truck deliveries from Matt Wilson. Having this delivery is still cheaper than us using another vendor in order to supplement. Paying for the actual liquid oxygen will continue to be higher given existing white hair.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Moving now to the committee of reports. Councilman Letherton.
Thank you, Letherton.
He had to go.
Oh, we went back to where.
Went back to where. Okay. Uh, Councilwoman Hester.
Uh, we did meet today. We'll meet again in two weeks.
Councilwoman Doppie.
No report, sir.
Councilwoman, no.
No report.
Councilwoman Doppie.
No report.
Uh, Vice Chair here.
No more.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Attorney, did you have some other business to tend to today?
Yes, sir. There are two certificates of compliance that have been reviewed at this point in time for wine and grocery, liquor stores here, uh, for the city. One of them is Reshish, B, Patel, D B A, four-twenty-eight Liquor and Wine at thirty-nine-seventy-three Hickson Pike, Chattanooga, three-seven-four, and five. It's in District Two. The other is for a Wigel store location, Wigel's number one-oh-nine at fourteen-twenty-one North Contour Road here in Chattanooga, which is in District Four. Supposed to meet all the requirements of the city code and have to have approval of the certificate of compliance. And that has been passed to the council. Have you got five, two, I believe you have five now, yes. Okay, yes. One, uh-huh, yes. At this time, we've come to place our agenda for the ready.